Need my agenda?
We're ready. I call to order the regular meeting of the City of Rancho Pass City Council, July 19, 2021, at 6:00 PM. And let's all rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance and Corey L. Rock. Yes, no, maybe so. Okay, Gary, there you go.
Thank you.
Dear heaven and father, Lord, thank you so very much for today. Thank you, Father, for people that are in this room, the leadership that is represented here today. Lord, please be with each of these council members and all the department heads on duty. And have this wonderful meeting at all great decisions will be made for this community and for the residents here. Lord, thank you so much for all the blessings that you've given us and for everything that you will have to cross over here in your name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now we're gonna go to update by Javier Solis, J.M. Davidson regarding Camp Brown Harbor Boat Head Project.
How's everybody doing?
Very good, thank you.
So last time I was here, we were at 25% complete. I got some good news, we're at 45% complete. We've done 17 cubic yards, 1,700 cubic yards of fill and geotext all over the harbor. We cleaned up all the west side of it, Allen Boulevard. We filled up all the holes, put some new geotext, it's good to go. We have had no safety incidents. We did 150 linear feet of new pavement on the north side of the harbor, right behind the base stand. I don't know if you guys seen it, it's a new pavement where the wall was falling, we fixed it up. It's good and going, right? Saw somebody fishing there today, so they were good. We'll be starting work behind Red Fish Willie Wednesday or Thursday, putting sheet piles, fixing up that boat head. So you should be seeing our barge going out there probably tomorrow afternoon, getting set up for it. And last time I was here, we had done 160 foot of the new cap right behind the boat house, between the boat house and the harbor master, we did the last 60 that same week. I just didn't get to come in the beginning of this month. But other than that, everything's been smoothly running and no visitor issues and no safety incidents, so. We're good? Thank you.
Okay, now we're gonna get an update on the Euclid pump station with John Gomez, Magnus Superintendent.
Right, he's just got back. Where are we at with the pump station? First, let me explain a little bit about the process that will take place. It's gonna take four lifts with a crane. The first lift, we're gonna be taking the 100 horsepower upright pump and the mechanical engine with the PTO. Once we take that off, then we can go into the hole and disconnect the third item. Now keep in mind that every time it rains, we have water in that well. Keep in mind that those things are 19 foot long and we cannot just plug that well up. It's gotta stay open no matter what. So anytime it rains, it sets us back. Now this last setback we had, we were scheduled to pull those two items out last Wednesday, but we lost the crane, the crane, the boom, when the crane bent or something. So we couldn't get the crane operator over here. I got another guy, as of now, everything's set up for Wednesday morning, 11 o'clock. We're gonna pull the first two items. Once we pull that pump out, now we have an access to get into the well. Right now, we don't have a safe access to get into the well. And once the pumps has a 24-inch flange that's in the well. So what's gonna happen, we pull out the first pump, we dry the well up as much as we can. Then the company that's doing the dismantling is gonna go in there, build a scaffold, take the other flanks out, take it apart. So now at that point, we can lift the third item out. I'm hoping if we don't get any rain and we can dry the ditch, we still have an issue with drying the ditch, right? There's still a lot of water in the city. So it's coming in and we've been pumping every day to try to get the water completely out. Once we do that, then we can set up a scaffold. Or the vendor can go in there, set up a scaffold and start removing the boats to pull the last unit out. Once we get everything out, then it goes over to South Texas Machine Shop. They're gonna tear it apart and give us the cost on the either replacement or the remanufacture of the pump, the rebuild of the pump. I'm thinking we're gonna rebuild that pump, both pumps. They're pretty good pumps, I know one of them's real old, the Rubaco pump isn't that old. I'd suggest it's gonna be cheaper for us to rebuild the pump. But we won't know until we get the DNI done. The DNI, basically, they take the pump, dismantle it, and figure out the cost to repair it. Then we get two other vendors to go to that same shop and look at the pump so we can get an estimate from them. Okay, so right now, Wednesday morning, 11:00 AM.
Will there be any kind of warranty work? Like, will they guarantee their work?
Yes, they do.
Not warranty, guarantee?
It's normal warranty and it's for one year, for one year that they got a warranty.
And it's South Texas?
Machine shop.
Machine shop.
They're the one doing the DNI, doesn't mean they're gonna be the one doing the repair. Okay, when I first got here, we did repair one of the pumps. Okay, and it was done by Terminatics. So I have a general idea what it's gonna cost and to be able to make sure that we get a good price on the rebuild.
I hope it doesn't rain tomorrow.
That's what I was just gonna say, they're predicting rain.
Well, the first pool, we don't have to worry about the rain. It's the second pool. Now keep in mind that it's gonna be four lifts and when we start going back, we go in reverse. The last pump we took out was gonna go in first. And they assemble that together, then we can bring in the other pumps. I got a book here, I call it my parking lot. If y'all have any questions, give me time to write them out and then I'll give you an answer. If y'all have some questions.
Yeah, as far as the PTO, are you gonna be replacing the friction disc in it? And like doing U-joints on the drive lines?
It's gonna be like a rebuild. You're gonna look at everything, we're not gonna leave anything behind. We're gonna make sure that everything is right. And not, that I think the last time it was only a half job. We only replaced the motor and didn't do nothing, whatever it was. It's not gonna be like that this time.
Right now, right now, I'm hoping that we bring everything up to 100% the way it was designed to work. And then once we see the way it's run 100%, the way it's rebuilt 100% the way it was designed to be, then we'll see if we need to do any kind of upgrades on it at all, whatsoever.
Well, one upgrade I know we're gonna have to have is the very drive for the big pump. And I got cost, I got three vendors that are looking to give me prices on it. That has to be done in order for us to run that big pump. We don't wanna install the big pump, put everything back together, and then try to run it and ruin it again. Okay, that is a special pump, well, they both are. And they have to have certain amount of water in there to operate, otherwise they start swinging. You think about a 19-foot pump. Y'all welcome to go see on Wednesday if y'all wanna go. Jason, you might be interested in seeing the big monster come out.
Yeah, that way if we put the variable, the variable speed on it, it'll run on itself depending on the level of the sump. And that way, we don't have to be having somebody there 100% of the time to make sure that we set it off when it starts cavitating and turn it back on when the well gets filled back up. So this one will hopefully have a design to where it can be started and then it'll maintain its speed to pump out the water that has in the sump versus running out of the water and, you know, having to be there, turn off the pump, start the pump.
It's gonna be fully automatic. The 100 horsepower will be fully automatic, we'll have a sensor telling it when to start and when to slow down in speed depending on the water level. And that would be your last pump that would come on. Basically, the way it operates, your T6 comes on first, then your power pack, we diesel engine is supposed to come on. The big pump is the last pump. And keep in mind that when the big pump or the John Deere pump is running, no other pump can run. One pump at a time. But it pulls out enough water to maintain the ditch. We also have that screen that you asked for, Magnus Mayor.
That's the automatic flow that goes back into the bay. We just gotta make sure that the backflow on it is working the way it's supposed to and let the water run out automatically without having to use pumps when it gets to a certain level. And it'll help the pumps out in the same term.
And also that debris screen that we got.
What kind of downtime are we looking at?
I can't tell because it depends on the rain. And then it also depends on, also depends on the mechanics doing the work. How long is it gonna take to do the DNI? I'll have a general idea once we pull the first pump out.
Yeah, 'cause I gotta do a lot of machine work that's gonna add a lot of time to it.
I think they both gonna need a lot of machine work. Possibly a new shaft now. We have to get a shaft. The time it takes to build it, I don't know. We might have to even buy one already built, but the delivery time is also a problem.
Is that readily available?
What, nothing for those pumps is ready available. You either make them or you order them from the factory. Last time we did the vertical pump, which is the big Rubaco pump, they had those particular shafts in stock. Well, they got them in stock now.
Would it not be smart of us to call them, just find out?
No, because we don't need what it, we don't know what it needs. Those vendors, when the vendors are doing their quote, that's the first thing they do. They call and ask the availability of the parts. So when they give us the quote, they know what it's gonna take to do it. I mean, I can too if y'all want me to, but the vendor's gonna be doing it. Let them make their money. Anything else? Y'all good with it? I'll keep.
We don't have much choice.
Yeah, but I'll keep, I'll keep giving you an update. If issues come out, I'll let y'all know. But y'all know, if it rains, that's a big issue. But y'all know, if it rains, that's a big issue. The rain is gonna be a big problem to cause some delays. Okay?
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mayor, council, on this issue, we're gonna be reporting to you every meeting because of the high priority nature of it. Every meeting, not every other meeting. So just wanna make you aware.
Okay. We need to get it up in.
I agree.
Okay, now, we're gonna go to the consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of this item unless a council member shall request. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda when we consider separately.
I make a motion that we approve the June 15th special meeting and the June 18th budget workshop meeting.
Second. Are you in favor?
Aye.
What about the June 21st?
Oh, I just had to scroll my little screen up. And the June 21st regular meeting.
Three on one. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, now, we're gonna go to the city manager, which is the monthly municipal court report for June 2021.
Good evening, mayor and council members. The report for the month of June, we had 124 cases filed. We filed 88 convictions and I magistrate at 51 cases. And out of those 51, 10 were after hours. We filed 26 KFIS pro fines and 37 Class C warrants. I signed 18 warrants for the detectives and we had like about 35 walk-ins and we had two emergency protective orders. The court still continues in taking payments online and by phone, corresponding by email, phone, and paxes. The court clerks are still reaching out to the defendants to see if they want to settle their cases before their walk-in docket and also offering the teleconferences, which have been very successful, and video conferences. The, for the minors, we, if they cannot come in person, we have to do a video conference for them. And this is just to meet our Supreme Court orders. After August 1st, we don't know what the Supreme Court is going to be changing for us, but I'll keep you all updated. We're doing pre-trials by virtual and from what I understand, those are very successful too. And we're still practicing the social distancing and requiring the face covering as required. And we're still holding the walk-in dockets, show cause hearings, and also the juvenile court are held every Wednesday. We attended a one-hour virtual conference that the TMCC held and I attended the judge's regional conference by virtual. And from what I understand, it's one of the last ones that they have to offer by virtual because now they're gonna start doing in-person trainings, conferences, and clinics. Do y'all have any questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Now, we're gonna go to the community enrichment, the monthly community enrichment department report. Sarah?
Good evening, how are y'all? I'm gonna have to read it from here because I didn't print it up. At the civic center for the month of June, we hosted four private events, four church services. We didn't have any training classes, one gun show and one two-day fishing tournament. The new chairs will be coming in around the middle of August. They've had some shipping delays. They've just kinda given me the runaround on that, but it's coming to an end. It's just kind of been, you know, since January. Aquatic update, we had to issue over 16 refunds for picnic and private parties because of the water situation and the rain event. So that was kind of a big deal last week. We were kinda busy with that, but the weather just has not been that good. I mean, our numbers have not been that good for the month of, the end of June. The beginning of June was good and we're still having some record-breaking days, so that's good. And then, moving on to the library. Library's open, H5, they're still doing curbside. That's still very popular. People kinda got spoiled to it, which is good and they're using it. June checkout totals, 839. Internet and Wi-Fi usage, 435. Library visits, 1,352. Overdrive, that's, y'all know what that is, but it's book on, you know, book on your iPhone or your iPad. And then, the summer reading program, which is in the park now, we had 189 people for the month of June, and that's once a week, so that was very well attended and they're doing it at the park, right across the street. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Okay, now, we're gonna go into development services, which is considering act on entering into an interlocal agreement with the city of Ingleside, authorizing the city of Aransas Pass to provide water services to the property located at 1649 Beasley, Ingleside, Texas.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is another one of the interlocals, since we have watered down Beasley and Ingleside doesn't have on that side. They're requesting permission tied into our water service. Ingleside has already approved them tying into our water, so it's just bringing it to y'all for the city's permission to allow them to tie into it.
I'll make a motion that we enter into an interlevel agreement with the city of Ingleside, authorizing the city of Aransas Pass to provide water service to the property located at 1649 Beasley, Ingleside, Texas.
I'll second.
Are you in favor?
Aye.
And here we go. Consider an act on approving change order number one and the last one for the SCADA. Number one, with dedicated controls LLC for the SCADA improvement project.
To start off with, this is a no-cost change order.
That's good, yay!
Hooray!
Yes, no, we're really trying to stay on top of stuff so we don't do any change orders. This one is because of delays. We had a radio tower scheduled to go up at the treatment plant. When looking at where it was going and they started digging, there was something on the ground. It couldn't go there. So it actually made sense to put it back at public works where our main system's gonna be at. So they just asked for additional days because of the relocating, had redesigned that, no additional cost. They do have some delays too because of material, because everything going on. And they, I think attached to there is a list of the stuff, when is it scheduled to be delivered and what's still pending. They also requested 30 additional days for rain. They, so a total of 60 days. Reviewing it with the engineers, we wanted to recommend 45 because we believe some of those days are overlapping. We're asking for more documentation if they wanna proceed with a full 60, but at this point, we recommend the 45. And if it comes to that, there might be additional days, we can always come back, but at this point, that's all it's for. It's for additional days and no costs.
I move to consider an act on approving change order number one with dedicated controls LLC for the SCADA improvements project.
I'll second.
Are you in favor?
Aye.
Now, we're gonna go to the monthly building department report. June 2021.
Mayor, council, didn't we just do this?
Yeah, I think so.
We had 91-
There we go.
Now, you got gooder.
We had 91 total permits. We need more commercial projects here, so if anybody has any friends or knows anybody that's wanting to move to Aransas Pass with a business, by all means, get them over and we'll get them set up. We had 11 new residential permits this month. The majority, if you wanna say there's a majority of the permits, were electrical and still a lot of repairs and things like that, so. We brought in about $19,000 in permit fees, so. Any questions?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we're gonna go to the monthly public works department report, June 2021.
All right, so on the first one, on the utility department, our biggest work was on light maintenance on sanitary sewer lines. They've been going in there more frequently and treating the lines and jetting them, cleaning them. Of course, we had the scare with the chemical last month, so that was one that kind of took priority. Luckily, everything came out good. We do have a training coming up with TCQ. I did hear back from him and it's gonna be the 12th and 13th. So I'll get with the department heads maybe tomorrow during our meeting and see who's gonna be attending that and we'll reach out, see what council members are attending that. And part of the, whoever's on the task force to participate in that, to kinda give us a guideline on how to prepare and how to be ready for events like this and to put a program in place where we can stay on top of a lot of these that are old and haven't been checked properly by third parties and how we can address those issues. In the street department, the biggest thing on this one was regressing ditches in June. On the overall projects, quick overview of some of these projects. The Colonial Grant project for sanitary sewer, we had a meeting today. We're working on finalizing a letter to go back out from the participants that qualify for the free sanitary sewer hookups that the grant is paying for. We want additional participation, so we're gonna have staff go out and, after hours, and meet with them and explain to them, because before, it was handing out flyers. A lot of times, they weren't home, so the flyers were left on their gates and stuff and it's better to explain it to them. We are working on a Spanish flyer as well to address those that don't understand the English. And hopefully, we can get more participation because this is an opportunity for them to get free service. And these are the people that qualify. I believe we have 40 total and we only got 14 that already signed up for it. So we'll be heading back out there again, probably later this week or early next week for that. With water treatment, electrical is part of FEMA project. The MCCs were delivered. Most of the material has been delivered on site, so we're seeing some movement out there. This week, they're phase one where they're tracing out every single wire, where it's going and what it's tied into. And they have already ordered the generator, is gonna power up the plant while they cut the power off. It should be arriving later this week. And then, next week is phase two, when they actually cut the power to half of the plant, running on generator and start doing the rewiring and bringing in the new MCCs. The CDBG projects with the grant, Snap and McCambo, if you haven't been out there, they are moving. They finally started working. The rain let up, so they started working on the ditch portion of it and they're gonna continue working that way. I've been asked why they're working on the downstream and not from upstream. This way, they clear the path for the water as they're fixing the other issues. The water doesn't reach another blockade and hold. This, as soon as they clear that, it just flows out and it empties out the line as they're working along instead of having additional delays, because there is still water in those systems that is being barricaded by cave-in, so that's what they're doing right now. The Weary and Wheeler has kicked off as well. They were out there today. I don't know if you saw the trucks, they had a, they were televising and cleaning out the lines and prepping them so that next week, they're gonna come in and start pipe bursting. They're hoping to be done within a week. That'll be great so that it's in and out. They're gonna let us know 72 hours prior to them doing that so we can notify residents of water being turned off temporary while they do that connection so that they don't go flush toilets when they're trying to put in the new line. They said it'll be one to two hours per section, so it wouldn't be that long when the residents will be without water. SCADA project, we did the no-cost change order with that one. Clarifier number one at the sewer plant has been completed 100%. It's back up and running. It looks great. They did an amazing job with it and it looks like a new clarifier out there. The digester out of the treatment plant as well is one of another projects we're moving forward with. They started and it's been back to delay because of the rain. They're removing all the sludge from the digester or the fields that they're taking into, their processes, they're underwater, so they can't get in there with trucks. So it's one of those games, we gotta wait till it dries up. The EPA utility risk assessment was completed already. It's been submitted to the EPA. The report came out really good. I'll get a copy over to Gary so he can send it to y'all. It identified issues that we might encounter for terrorist attack and so forth on our utilities system. We did very well overall. Minor little things that we can address in-house and that, we're reviewing that report now and trying to identify which of those are gonna be priority and how we can address them. A lot of it is small, small stuff. No major issues came up, so. They are working on the second part of it, which is emergency respond plan for it. So in case there is a situation where we have another hurricane or a chemical threat, that there's a plan in place with procedures on how to do that. So they're doing that for us too as the second part of the project. And that is due in December to EPA. And finally, Motel 6, they started work on that one. They're about halfway done with the sewer. Of course, they had to stop because of the rain. And being that that whole back area behind the Motel 6 is swamp land, is causing them some delays. We also did get the permit already approved by Texas to proceed with the water in front, through the front edge, so we got the green light to proceed with that. So hopefully, here, if it stays dry, we can start continuing by next week and hopefully get this done pretty quick. Any questions?
No.
No.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for handling. Thank you. And now, we're gonna go to Sandra with the finance department for the monthly finance department report for May 2021.
Hi, good evening. Can we go to just the graph, Gary, please? The very first one? Okay, we're just gonna, this is the revenue. Unfortunately, for the month of May, they were looking at. The only fund or funds that met their goal for revenue was the debt service, which is the property tax collected, and the water and sewer. But if we go to, that's where the revenue side, if we go to the expense side, which is good, you know? We may not have met in the general fund our revenue budgeted, but we didn't exceed our budgeted expenditures either. So it's kind of, for the month overall, there was a loss of 141,000, but year-to-date, we're doing good. We're like a little bit over two, we're over $2 million year-to-date. So we move on to the following graph. And here, you'll see the property tax collected. You'll see that it's 5.1 million for the, up until May, year-to-date, compared to last year at 4.7, and the year before that at 4.1. Then we go to the following graph, which is our sales tax collected year-to-date. We're at, year-to-date as of May, we're at 1.7 million compared to the year before that at 1.5 and the year before that at 1.4. So you can see that our sales tax is continuing to grow. The following is a depiction of our whole two sets, you know, that we get one penny, MDD gets half a penny, crime control gets the other half. What you won't find there on the financials that I will start including based on some recommendations that came out of our budget meetings with Gary and Councilwoman Abrego, was starting to inform the council on how many water connections we have and how, that's a really good depiction of how the city's growing. So I decided to go back to 2017. 2017, for the month of July, which is the month that we're in, we built 3,944 accounts in 2017. Same month, 2018, we built 4,017 accounts. 2019, 4,210 accounts. 2020, 4,373 accounts. This month, we built 4,509 accounts.
We're growing.
Exactly.
We're growing.
We are growing. I don't know, do you all have any questions? And this will be a part of a graph moving forward. I just totally forgot to include it.
That's, that's good information.
Good information.
But I will, I will be including it moving forward. And that came out of a discussion that we had while we were working on the, on the budget worksheets during our budget meeting, so. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're gonna go to the third quarter investment report, April through June.
I'm sorry, I was almost going to take my seat. Okay.
Don't get lost.
For the third quarter, interest rates, what can I say? Nah, there are very many if you wanna borrow money, but not if you wanna invest your money anywhere in a savings account. Unfortunately, we have to be very liquid, as you know. We're not investing in CDs or any kind of instrument other than cash. So for the whole month of, for the whole quarter, I'm sorry, for the quarter, we had eight point six million dollars of cash, more or less on average, available to, in the banks. We earned a total of five thousand one hundred and one dollars for, of interest. That's a rate of return on our investment of zero point twenty-three percent. The good thing to report is that we met our benchmark. We exceeded the benchmark, which is a three-month T-bill. The three-month T-bill rate of return for that investment was zero point zero two percent. So that's not, you know, that's all I have to talk, to say on that. But we had about forty-three percent of our money in Texpool, twenty-seven percent of our money we had sitting here at Prosperity, and we had thirty percent at Texas Class. Now, as far as our money in Prosperity, we do require them to be, to be sufficiently collateralized, and we did have sufficient collateral app at the bank there. Do you all have any questions about the investment report? And I believe I've already posted these online, so they're available online as well. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Again, great job. Thank you.
Now, we're gonna go to public safety, which is consider en act and approving the police chief to enter into assessed forfeiture agreement between the Aransas Pass Police Department and the Hidalgo County District Attorney Office.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is just an MOU for Chapter 59 agreement between the police department and the DA's office. We have several homes that are, two officers assigned to the DEA have seized around that area, and those homes have sold or are in the process of being sold. They weren't seized federally. The feds didn't wanna take the seizure, so Hidalgo County agreed to process the seizure, and we're looking at a sizable chunk of money coming in if, if this is approved. I was required to sign this. They needed it back ASAP, so I did sign it. This is post-approval, but you could still deny it, and I could call them. We would just miss out on those assets.
What are the assets?
Several homes, apparently. And we're getting sizable percentages from each, each seizure.
Well, okay. I make a motion, we approve the police chief to enter into an asset forfeiture agreement between the Ranses Pass Police Department and the Hidalgo County District Attorney's Office.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we're gonna go to consider en act and approving and ordinance amending the city code of ordinances such as nine dash twenty, adopt a fire prevention code by amending the fire department fee schedule and providing for an effective date.
Mayor, Council, this is the immingation fee that we talked about a few months ago. Just amending it to two fifty per job to two fifty a year. So that's what that is. And we're still keeping the permit per job, so we can know when these are going on in our city. So that's what this amendment is.
Now, we need to make sure and keep tabs on bills.
Yeah, that's why we're keeping the permit per job, but the fee is just once a year.
And there's only one or two companies that can do it anyway?
Yes, yes.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve an ordinance amending the city code of ordinances section nine dash twenty, adopting of the fire prevention code by amending the fire department fee schedule and providing for an effective date.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Now, we're gonna go to consider en act on request to waive the rental fee for use of the Aransas Pacific Center for Halloween festival on October 29th through 31st, 2021, sponsored by the Aransas Pass Public Safety Explorers Post 347.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm coming on, before you guys, on behalf of the Explorer Posts, we are requesting to use the Civic Center for a fundraiser during Halloween of this year. I've spoke to Sarah Lee, and we got the room set up in All Abba. She mentioned I'd probably wanna come before you guys to see if you guys would be gracious enough to waive the rental fee for our explorers to hold the fundraiser at the Civic Center.
Is it gonna be a haunted house?
We're working on it. For sure, we're gonna have a fall festival, carnival, games, and cakewalk, and dunking booth for Chief.
I don't think so. I know he won't do that one.
It'll be, I spoke to Fernando about it. We'll do it during the truck-or-treat as well, but we both believe it'll help with the traffic in line from the truck-or-treat. It'll bloom up a little bit.
A three-day festival is a long festival.
It is. It'll give our youth something to do as well. It's weekend of Halloween.
Yeah.
Keep something safe for the kids.
Keep throwing water balloons.
I think we may even do a pie-throwing contest.
Oh, that'd be fun.
Yeah. What's some awesome ideas for Council?
There you go.
Oh, the mayor? And Jason's volunteering?
Pie-throwing.
I said us two.
Oh, sure.
Now, it's bobbing frapples. It's not gonna be in the water. It's gonna be on the strings, or how you're gonna do that?
So, once again, with COVID, we probably won't do the apple. We could do it on the string.
The kids would love that. Have you ever seen that?
I laughed again.
You saw it at base. It is. That's why I said you can't do bobbing, yeah, bobbing frapples.
We have a lot of games planned and some advanced martial crafts and stuff for the kids.
I make a motion that we waive the rental fee for use of the Aransas Pacific Center for our Halloween festival on October 29th through 31st, sponsored by the Aransas Pass Public Safety Explorers Post 347.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we're gonna go to the monthly public safety report.
And if those are Boston cream pies from Hester's, I will volunteer to take them in the face. Okay, thank you, Mayor and Council. So, getting on to our report, the highlights, we had that SRO that we had hired. He had to leave because of medical emergency. We have hired a former officer back into the SRO program from the city of Portland. So that is pretty awesome. Patrol is fully staffed at this point. Dispatch, we got our TCO supervisor in training, and the last opening that we have in there, we had him in background phase. He then backed out, but we have another applicant prospect, which will be great to tell you about next week or next month if that works out. It was a record month for adoptions in animal control services. We had sixteen total adoptions. That's incredible. Eleven of those were from Shrimpery, and then five from an event that they were invited to in Corpus Christi. So it was very nice. And I will say that the eleven from Shrimpery, I think most all, if not all, went to other towns, and as far as where, I think it's like San Antonio or Austin. So it was really, really good. Admin, we've just been focusing on budget most of that month, and there you got the numbers there. I was gonna make a joke and say that our jail population's growing, but I didn't think that'd be as popular as our water account's growing. But good news is, the jail population is not growing. You have our monthly surveys there. As you scroll along, you can see the detectives' report, which I encourage you to read it. It's very insightful to see what they put out. And for those in the audience and members of the public tuning in live, this report will go live, I believe, at eight o'clock this evening. Unless there's questions, that's all I got for you this.
That's always a glory.
Good job.
Thank you, guys.
Now, we're gonna go to the monthly party department report for June 2021.
Good evening, everybody. So, we set our record last month at ninety-nine calls. That's the most calls that we've had since I've been here. Forty-eight of those are medical. Our medical is really starting to go up, go up, go up. I think we're seeing in the, a lot of these RV parks where older folks are starting to stay now in their RVs, and I think we're catching a lot of just medical from that kind of stuff. Other than that, only eight fires, so our fire marshal's doing a good job. And we had seventeen false alarms, and I think we were having that with some trouble that we were having in a couple of stores, but I think we've got those things taken care of now. We did fifteen inspections. If you'll notice on our inspections, we've got our captains now involved in doing inspections. All of our captains are certified fire inspectors, all the way up to plans examiner, which is really good. That's not a requirement throughout the state. So our, but our inspectors are, Inspector One, Inspector Two, and plans examiner, so they could actually look at plans, which is usually what me and Chief Abrego do. But they have the means to be able to do that. And getting captains out into the buildings, they always take their crew with them, so now they're seeing, they're seeing what's in there, pre-planning, okay, if this happens, what will we do? You know, the guys are talking. So it's really good. I really encourage that. With our training, one hundred and fourteen hours of training, if you notice, some of these guys are getting eighteen, sixteen, you know, anywhere from nine, you know, they're constantly trained. These guys constantly train, and they train and train and train. I'll always say we have some of the best-trained firefighters in Texas. We just absolutely do. The other thing I wanted to bring up about our Fire and Ice Fireball that we have coming up, it's a fundraiser that's gonna be happening with the fire department. Got some really good opportunities coming up with that. It's in conjunction with Spirit of Aransas Pass. That's the one I came and talked to you about getting shrimp regrouts. It is growing and growing. We were lucky enough to be able to book the Chad Cook Band, if you know who that is. Really excited about that, and I did bring a couple of brochures and sponsor packets.
I got mine. I got mine, but I'll, there you go.
Those are the sponsor packets and vendor packets that'll be going out, or that are already going out, and we've already talked, we've had people approach us before we could get them out.
So do you have barbecue teams signing up already?
Yes, yeah. And it is a sanctioned barbecue, so anybody can get in. They just have to go and get sanctioned.
What?
What?
Your crunk pot.
No crunk pots.
But, yeah, and it is a four-meat, so, I mean, people are super excited about it.
I am too.
Mr. Hinkle's been just...
Amazing.
Yeah, just, I mean, he just jumped in there and helped us anything. He's like, yeah, I'll take care of y'all sanctioning fees and all this stuff. So we will be looking for barbecue judges, and it's basically all-you-can-eat barbecue, because, I mean, you're just taking a bite of each one. Yeah, we'll get you in. We'll get, it's like you're just taking a bite of brisket and then going to the next one, and I'm a seasoned judge, if you can't tell. And I did it at WinFest, and I mean, it was all I could do to eat what was put in front of me, and you're only taking a bite at a time. So we're really excited about it coming up. I think this is actually gonna turn into something bigger than we ever imagined for year after year after year. So, I mean, we have lots of vendors that are interested in being out there with us, so.
I would like to see if my dad would be interested in judging. He actually traveled around the United States and did barbecue cook-offs.
That would be awesome.
He had a trailer that was incredible. It was something to see. The work of art in itself within this barbecue trailer was incredible.
When these got, when we were talking to Mr. Hinkle about, Hickel, about what size lots they need, he's like, oh, yeah, they're like forty by forty, because they bring these big trailers, and they camp out, and they, you know, start cooking at like three in the morning and stuff. So, I mean, and it's, it'll be chicken, brisket, ribs, and pork butt, and then there's gonna be like a, you know, maybe a dessert one they're gonna do, where just kinda anybody can get in, just kind of a for fun.
I'm offended by your term pork butt.
I think that's the cop division. I'm not sure.
The trophies are ordered. The trophies are ordered. I think I got a sponsor for the band today.
Oh, wow. Exciting.
I'm really excited about Chad Cook. We got Chad Cook before he was big, and my cousin's the promoter for Green Hall, and I told him what we got him for, and he lost his mind. He couldn't believe that we got him for that prize. So, because as soon as we booked him, he went number one on the Texas charts and all kinds of stuff, so.
Awesome. Hotels are covered. I mean, we've got all of that.
Yep. It's gonna be a huge event. Huge deal. All right, any questions?
Hey, we should ask if they'll waive the fee. They waived it for Halloween.
I know. I'm gonna have to put that in next month, I guess. I didn't know that was a thing we could do, but now I know.
Maybe the next council meeting.
Maybe.
I'll tell you, no, they don't do it for us for training either.
No, no. All right, any questions? All right.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks.
Now, we're gonna go to citizen comments. No, we're gonna go to city council or staff announcement, which is a budget workshop session, July 29, 2021.
Yes, that pretty well explains it. Another item we'll have on there, but the big one is the budget work session on that date.
Five thirty?
I'm sorry, five thirty. And it'll be a follow-up to what you heard at the, at the last work session, and the budget, early preliminary budget briefing.
Now, we're gonna go to citizen comments. Citizen comments are intended for the matter that are not scheduled on the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes and state your name and address for the record. The advice of the Texas Open Meeting Act prohibits the city council from responding and discussing your comments. The law authorizes the following: Make a statement of factual information, recite existing policy. Advice that this subject may be placed on the agenda for a subsequent meeting.
Mayor, is there anybody? Anybody in the audience?
Kathy Steele, 137 Munson Drive, Aransas Pass. I came this evening to ask that while you're in your budget sessions, that you possibly put the streets of Mobile Village somewhere in those budgets. I emailed each one of you, Mr. Edwards, Mr. Cantonia. I also sent pictures with that email. The streets are worse today than they were when I took the pictures. And so that's, we would greatly appreciate your consideration of doing something with our streets. Thank you.
We appreciate it, Ms. Steele.
Beg your pardon?
We appreciate you. Thank you, Ms. Steele.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, now we're gonna go into executive session. Section 551-071 of Texas Open Meeting Act to meet with his attorney to seek legal advice on a matter of which the duty of the attorney to the city council under the disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meeting Act and section 551-072 deliberations regarding the real estate property as it relates to a commercial contract between, a contract with 630 Ransom Item Partners LLC, formerly known as Blue Waters Partners LLC, for unimproved property within addendum of special provisions for an oasis CAD number 380310828.1.61 acres of land on Ransom Island, Track Seven, commonly known as 630 East Ransom Road, Aransas Pass, Texas 78336, and section 551-071 of the Texas Open Meeting Act to meet with his attorney to seek legal advice on a matter of which the duty of the attorney to the city council under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meeting Act relating to the State of Texas EXRE Association Against Anexation Abuse versus the City of Aransas Pass, cost number eight dash nineteen dash zero three six eight CB dash C in the 343rd District Court of Aransas Pass, Aransas County, and it is 652.
Yes, that was 15-4, correct? 15-4?
Yes.
And just read it as it is, but say third amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
I think we're live now.
We're good?
Yes, we're live.
Okay. We're gonna reconvene in open session to consider and take action if any on any item discussed in the executive session, and it is 8:07.
All right, the council will take action to authorize the city's legal council to review and take action if necessary to seek court relief in the state of Texas X-Ray Association against Annexation Abuse versus the City of Aransas Pass, cause number A-19-0368-CV-C in the 343rd District Court of Aransas County.
I'll second.
On your favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And did you want the other, are y'all doing the other one too? Consider an act to approve a third amendment to a commercial contract with 630 Ransom Island Partners LLC, formerly known as Blue Water Partners LLC for unimproved property with or without a possible, am I supposed to say first amendment or third amendment again? First amendment to the addendum of special provisions for Nuaces CAD number 380310-A, 28.61 acres of land on Ransom Island, tract seven, commonly known as 630 East Ransom Road, Aransas Pass, Texas.
I'll second.
On your favor?
Aye.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
On your favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.